Hello, everybody. I'm Oka Tokes Mayor Bill Robertson. Happy Easter, happy Good Friday. Happy just start of the holidays, what would have been, of course, the school holidays. But certainly, we're living in a different world. I'm Oka Tokes Mayor Bill Robertson. And with me today at the council table, we have councillor Thorn, councillor Rockley at the far end, councillor Fanns, councillor Christopher's, and also attended but watching but from home will be councillors Watrin and councillor Hemmerich. Once again, welcome, everybody. We're here to discuss the Arts and Learning Campus. So this, the session that we're going to have, the question and answer session will be about thirty minutes. So if you have questions that you would like to ask, please type them on your screen. We have staff here will be writing those questions, sorry, not writing them out. They will come up on the screen and I will be reading out those questions and a number of members of council will be answering those questions. So get started after my video yesterday and the announcement that we're removing some of the trees for the future Arts and Learning Campus. There's been considerable public interest through social media channels. First of all, just going back a bit, the, there are five partners in the Arts and Learning Campus, of course, town of Oka Tokes, Oka Tokes Public Library, Foothill School Division, Chrysler Redeemer School Division and Bow Valley College. We have partnered together, actually, I had consultations over the last year or so to come together for this project. Now, of course, we've unfortunately had information that's been some false information spreading about this project. We were here to try and dispel some of that and present the facts to you. So our community, we understand, is under considerable stress. In fact, the world is facing unprecedented upheaval and change. I'm sure you're all feeling that, just the fact that we're all here remotely and not in a regular council meeting. The fact that many of you are stuck at home, self-isolating or doing your best to stay at home, trying to flatten the curve. And well done for all those people, of course, who are observing social distance and washing your hands and doing whatever it takes to keep our community moving and a better place. So it's easy to let our fears and worries impact our perception, but it's important that we keep to the facts. We have been planning the Arts and Learning Campus project for almost a year. And we gave it formal budget approval, that's almost a year ago. We have done extensive community consultation on this. January nineteenth, we explored partnerships, that's January nineteenth, a year ago, January, in January nineteen. May of two thousand nineteen, we approved the twenty-three point three million dollar budget for it. And then in November, about six, seven months later, we reduced that to eighteen point three million dollars. And Chrysler Redeemer is paying six million dollars for their portion of the project. So that has been done for about last four months was the last budgetary decision-making. Now, of course, the Arts and Learning Campus, this is not an unplanned change. Now, more than ever, we need to continue with this construction for Oka Tokes's long-term economic health. In fact, for the province's long-term economic health. Certainly, this question was asked, I have been on a number of conference calls with our premier, Premier Kenny. And he is encouraging municipalities to go forward with capital projects with capital dollars that are coming from the province. In fact, we can't use those capital dollars for any other purpose except what they were intended for. So we can't take them and put them onto tax relief or put them onto protective services. That is not allowed and the province has strict guidelines for that. So council declared that economic vitality is an essential strategy for business recovery. This project directly relates to that directive. And of course, the location for it is significant. It will reinvigorate the downtown core and create key anchors in the downtown. Our partners, ones I mentioned earlier, are depending on us. They are depending on this building becoming operational by August two thousand twenty-one to sustain their businesses. Now let's talk about, of course, Ethel Tucker Park and the trees. I've lived in this town for forty years. I love parks. I love Ethel Tucker Park, by all means. I knew Ethel Tucker when she used to sell tickets for some of our major hockey games. She's a, was a great community volunteer. And of course, personally, as a cub leader, as a beaver leader, a coaching baseball and soccer, I worked in Ethel Tucker Park with kids doing any number of different activities. We used to have a torchlight parade with the Cubs on Baden Powell's birthday. We would go down through Ethel Tucker Park. I love that park. But of course, there is another purpose for it and we have other parks for all the activities I've just explained. Twenty-two trees along the north and west edges are being removed. The rest will remain. It's twenty-two trees. And remember, we do have a policy replacing more trees than we're taking out, either at that location or elsewhere in town. Ethel Tucker will continue to be honored in the new park. Her legacy and history is important to Oka Tokes and it will continue to be honored. We will now respond to any questions you might have. If you've just tuned, turned in, tuned in rather, sorry, we're going to go for the next thirty minutes. If you, you ask a question, we're not able to get to it, we will still answer it on our face or Facebook page on the town website. So any questions we don't get to will be answered. And once again, I really want to thank everybody for tuning in today. We know that this is your busy holiday time with family and so on, with what limited family you're able to connect with when these unprecedented times. So thank you to anybody who's watching in. Thank you to all of council for coming in. And thank you to administration for helping put all this together. It was Good Friday when we, this was suggested, I thought, it's Good Friday, how can we ask our staff to come in? But administration said, no, it's important to get the facts out there. That's why we're doing this today on Good Friday. So thanks to everybody for coming in here. We're going to go to a question from Bonnie. Here's the question. Sorry, I have to get a little closer to my screen to read this. A lot of citizens are using or against using tax dollars to build this. Why isn't the, why is, isn't the private sector stepping up? Why do they not do that? All right, well, Bonnie, thank you for that question, by all means. First of all, it is grant dollars from the province. Now, certainly, there only is one taxpayer, but if we don't, if we don't use those tax dollars for this project, we have to use them for another capital project that might be necessary. But council decided after consultation to go ahead with this project as encouraged by the province. So it's certainly, while it is tax dollars, it's not, there will be no increase on anybody's taxes or anything for that. So next question. Yes.
When I do this, I start at the top.
Sorry, sorry, I was looking, that wasn't worried, but I see they're streaming down.
Go to the top of the channel and you take them in order and you do it by the time.
Yes, thank you. So our next question.
I'm currently unmuted. And I just also wanted to chime in on, on that last one.
Sure, we'll go to councillor Rockley for a further additional comment on that question. Councillor Rockley, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And I also wanted to talk about the, the grant funding that, you know, if there was a decision at this time to, to not proceed and not use the, the grant funding, then it's unlikely that that money would go back to lower provincial income taxes or provincial taxes. It would likely just be given to another community for a similar project. So it wouldn't really save any tax dollars, it would just make the facility or those tax dollars spent in another Alberta community instead of Oka Tokes. Thank you.
Is there another councillor Christopher's further on this question? Go ahead.
Okay, super, thank you. The other reason why I think the private sector, or just to contribute to this conversation, to answer this question. We're building an expanded library, we're building offices for our, we're helping, supporting in partnership with local education institutions and we're working with Community Futures. None of the, these are all nonprofit. These are not organizations that are providing services at a profit. There's no profit to be made through the services of schools, through libraries, and even through the work of Community Futures. So why would the private sector step up and say, oh, I'll build those buildings for you because I see an opportunity to make money? There is no opportunity to make money. These are community services that are teaming up to save money to taxpayers by collaborating on a building that makes it more economical for everybody to expand and grow and continue to offer their services to our community.
Hello. Oh, hello. Taking a tip from a fellow councillor. What I'd like to do is just start working down the list of
Questions in a chronological way. The question is, please tell me how, how you're tearing out trees from the park before you have a permit. The reality is, we own the land, trees can be removed before the development permit is issued. The development permit is on the table for the next council meeting, so this is just getting ahead of the curve, I guess. And the second question, if I might, just so that I can work down the, the list, is there not another location this center can be built? The location and the sighting has been subject to significant consultation amongst the five partners. There are other locations in town, certainly. This lot is serviced, there are other places that will involve land purchase and, and cost, raise the cost of the, of the project. So I'll pass it on then.
Go ahead, councillor Christopher.
The other thing I'd mention about the timing of the removal of the trees is that we're subject to, I think it's international law, certainly national law around migratory birds. And there's very, very specific timing, a very small window in which we can go in and get these trees removed. So we're pulling that trigger now to come into compliance with those, with those laws.
Oh, and I'm unmuted now, thank you, also contributing to this one. About the location, also as Mayor Robertson mentioned in his opening remarks, that this is a strategic location for the, the, the economic health of the town of the Oka Tokes downtown. When you think about it, having this facility at that location, where there'll be people working and going to the library and at some point in the future also attending events at the, at the Performing Arts Centre, then that benefits the businesses that are in close proximity to the venue. So people will be going for dinner and they'll be also going to shops and that type of thing. So it's kind of that, you know, agglomeration of, of businesses and services together that can really create the situation where they benefit from each other. And so the location is strategic at, you know, more or less the, the heart of Oka Tokes and easily accept accessible from all, all corners of the, of the community. And so sure, you know, of course, there's other locations where it could be built. But this is a great location for the town of Oka Tokes's future, the town of Oka Tokes's downtown business community. And really, just a benefit for, for everybody at that location. Thanks.
Next question, we'll go to the next question. Councillor Hemmerich, go ahead.
Bill's the one unmuted right now. You're live, Bill.
Councillor Hemmerich, I'm unable to unmute you, so I don't know if you might want to just check your audio.
So live, we're going to go to councillor Thorn Towns for the next question. We'll actually ask councillor Thorn to answer.
There we go, okay.
Couple of questions, so.
So I have a couple ones to do. One is the, why will the building not move to the Bighorn Building over by Costco? So the Bighorn Building is a private enterprise and that is wholly separate from the town of Oka Tokes. So we can't just decide that this project's going to go there. So even from a space perspective, I don't think there's enough space, that's, there's that. And then the other question I'm going to just chat about is, don't the people of the town get to vote on this? This project was approved way back in May and through a consultation process to us getting to that. So the town is voting on that and you vote on that because you've elected the seven officials here that sit at this table. And I, I understand right now that people are upset about what's happening. But this isn't something that we just overnight decided to do. There was a whole process in how this came to fruition. Council unanimously voted in favor of this project. We dealt with it in May of last year. We dealt with it again in November with a budget amendment, which we decreased the budget. And then we dealt with it again, I believe it was at the beginning of January of this year where we dealt with the permit, land use, land use side of it. So this has been on the range, there's been a multitude of open houses and public events. I know through the town's social media, my own social media, this has been broadcasted out. So the fact that the trees are being removed, I, I get the emotional attachment to it, I have the same challenge as every one of you. But that was part of this project. And we aren't moving, getting rid of Ethel Tucker Park. Ethel Tucker Park is still, still going to exist. That's part of our history and it's to maintain that history. So just, the citizens have had an opportunity, you've had plenty of opportunity to participate on this. I get that our announcement and our timing on all of this has added to a stress level that we're all feeling. Council all feels that same stress level. There's not one of us that wasn't stressed about all of this. But we still wholeheartedly believe that this project is the right thing for our community. And that we are doing it in a manner that is going to support the economic development of our community. It is going to create a, a anchor in our downtown core that as we move forward and come out of this on an economic recovery basis, councillor Rockley touched to that, is going to be extremely beneficial. And those social connection spaces like a library is going to be imperative for the social mental well-being of our community. So that's kind of the lay of the land and the history of how we're going, or how we've gotten to here and go from there. So that's, that's my comments on a variety of questions. I think there's about eight questions I answered in there.
Well, I can unmute, okay. Thank you. First of all, we'll go to the next question from, from Bonnie. Why isn't this put on hold during the global pandemic? As I said before, we've been asked by the province to continue on with these projects. They're trying its economic development. And in fact, the province has asked us to come up with more projects that they will put capital dollars to. The province understands that keeping the province working is to the benefit of everybody. So as much as certainly, the new standards have to be arrived at with social distancing and so on for construction workers, they can do it. I have watched on TV a number of construction projects going at different places in the country that where they're using social distance and so on. It's a new way of construction, but the province, the country does not want the work to start, to stop. They want it to continue. We're going to go to another question here. Councillor Christopher's, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that all of these partners that are part of this project are considered essential services by the province. And they have made it very clear, please move forward, please spend these dollars, these are approved projects and they're essential to your community.
All right, we'll go to Simon Green's question. So is there a risk that provincial funding becomes stretched and building arts centers are deemed low priority? Or worse, we're seen to have been giving priority that should have been spent on something, something that we've spent the money, I take it, something low priority. We've spent it on a low priority item, so the province withdraws the funding. Somebody want to take that one? Councillor Thorn, go ahead.
Thanks for the question, Simon. The directive we have gotten from the province is that the province is not going to dictate from a municipal perspective what projects they deem to be the most important. They're asking municipal leaders to determine what projects make the most sense in their local communities because that is why we're elected in our local communities, is that we are the most in touch with the, with the projects in our community that make the most sense. So, you know, the grant dollars that are here, we have them already. It's not like we're waiting for them to come. Those grant dollars already exist here. So I don't, I don't believe that that is a risk. That is, certainly isn't the messaging we are getting from the calls that our mayor's on with the provincial side of things and all of those things. So that certainly isn't a messaging that they are going to start dictating which projects are priority and which ones are not. The message they've given strongly is that municipalities will be the first line of economic stimulus and that is what this is.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add a little bit to that as well. I do not believe there's a chance that the province will deem this to be low priority or worse, as suggested. This is a collection of several stakeholders in this. This is a three educational institutionals, institutions, Foothill School Division, Chrysler Redeemer School Division, Bow Valley College, as well as the library. This is not low priority. This is absolute essential services that we're, we are conglomerating on that location. So we have no fear for that, Simon. Thank you for your question.
Thank you for that. Unmuting me, please, or do I?
Okay, there we go. All right, and just adding further regarding the provincial priority. When I spoke with RJ Sigurdsson yesterday on the phone as he left Edmonton, he pulled over safely, well done RJ. And, but we did discuss this project. He's quite excited to see this go forward. Absolutely, our provincial representative in the legislature. So we have certainly consulted with provincial officials and so on regarding things like this and it's a go. They are encouraging us. Next question we're going to go to. Kathy has said, this should not happen without a public meeting. I believe councillor Thorn addressed this a little earlier with the consultation. Plenty of consultation over the last year in particular, so there have been many public meetings regarding this, this project. Councillor Rockley, go ahead.
Thank you. And I just wanted to add a little bit more detail on that in that when the decision was made with the, with the budget to have funding for this project, that was done in a public meeting with notification beforehand for, about that public meeting. Also, when there was the land use amendment for the Arts and Learning Campus, that was, of course, also a, a public meeting and of council that was advertised as well. So there, there has been opportunities for, for input and obviously continued opportunities for public input. I would be remiss to say, if I didn't say happy Easter and happy Passover. And, you know, even though it's Good Friday, we're still here doing public consultation. So all the best to you and yours. Thank you.
All right. Going then to the next question, we're getting close to the end of our time. Go ahead, councillor Thorn.
Just that their comment that it's not that the whole town owns that piece of property. Absolutely, you all, we all own that property, it's a municipal piece, and that nobody wants that. I'm just going to challenge that bit. I can say since yesterday when this went up and we started to see the circulation on social media, council has received, I think, probably about, I don't know, fifteen, twenty email, I think, of different sorts. I've had, my phone is blowing up from a text message perspective of people in our community that do want to see us. So I get that there is certainly a wide variety of you out there that are opposed down that path and I understand that. But this is a decision that we have made down this path. With that, so to say that no one in our community supports that, it's just not correct. There is a lot of people out there that do support it, they just don't want to get into the social media fray. And council is seeing that in a big way. The other thing that we didn't touch on about this municipal land about this municipal land and it kind of loops back to that, why don't we just go to the Bighorn Building? We've got a bunch of organizations that are going to be part of this building and are partners with us. And those those organizations are tax-exempt organizations. So we are now moving them on to tax-exempt land and they won't be paying taxes. And so we're taking them out of commercial properties. So the Bighorn Building is an example, a commercial property. But if they if this whole operation went in there, we would collect no tax on that. And that does not serve, especially in the current economic environment we're going to be, that does not serve our community in any way. And so by moving everybody to this location and this site, which was one of the key key considerations that council had, is that tax element is another reason why this location has been chosen. We own the land and it creates that space where everybody that is currently a tax-exempt status will be on tax exempt. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a question here about, do you understand how the global economy will be affected by this? And I think it's in the context of the world's going to be moving more virtual now that we're all home and we're needing, we're learning how to work from home. We're learning how to do meetings via Zoom. I get that. And I I think that it's premature to assume that we're totally just going to retreat into our homes, that we won't come back into spaces and be face to face together. And I also wanted to say that when we move forward with projects that keep companies employing Albertans, they stay alive as companies that feed taxes, the non-residential tax base back into municipal as well as provincial and federal tax bases. And if we let businesses close and not be in a position to hire Albertans, that impacts your taxes differently. There's a philosophy out there. I've been seeing it in some of the threads. We shouldn't be spending right now. There is a sweet spot. There is a sweet spot for sure, absolutely. But when we stop spending and we stop allowing companies to to build our services and move forward with with the services that they the businesses that they are in, that will hurt you as taxpayers. And this is one of those examples.
Thank you. And I also just wanted to comment briefly on the the topic of the COVID nineteen pandemic currently happening and specifically that I I heard I've heard rumblings that there some people are talking about a protest onsite at some point, you know, soon either Sunday or Monday, you know, hopefully. Hopefully not on Easter Sunday or Monday. But anyhow, I've heard that there is some people planning to do an onsite protest. And of course, you know, of course, the right to peaceful protest is is paramount in this great country. And if you do decide to do something like that at this time, please, please do not go within two meters of someone who is not from your household. I I can't stress that enough that, you know, a big gathering of people that aren't social distancing could could really be a detriment in to people's health, your own health and others' health. So if there is, you know, folks who go out to to protest as as is their right, please, for your own health and the health of others, please do not come within two meters of of another person that's not from your household. Thank you.
Self hitting that red button. Oh, there we go. So we'll go to Deb has asked a question. Where is the information for this project? By all means, all the information is on the website for this project. Please log on to the Okatoks Home website and to get the information. Plus, all of the information from this session that we're having right now and any questions we're not able to get to will also be posted on the town website. So you can certainly go there also. Okay, we'll just take one last question. How do you respond to the feelings that people like me have? This is from Simon. By the time we find out about these projects, the decisions have all been made. I certainly understand that as much as the town council, town council and administration tries to communicate about various projects that we have within the town, some people may not get that information. On my time on council, we do our best to make sure that citizens are informed about these things. We certainly, things are on the website, things are posted in the newspaper. I don't know how many different articles have been in the Western Wheel about this. I I apologize, Simon, if you did not get the information about this, but as I said, it's been almost a year since we've been talking about this project and we've gone through a number of iterations and so on on it. So we're going to stop there. It is the thirty-minute mark. Thank you very much. If you chimed in, there are still a number of questions that will be answered on the on the website. Thank you. If you've taken part out of your very valuable holiday time on Good Friday, thank you very much to council. Thank you for administration for putting all this together so we can get this information out. Thank you very much, everybody, and have a great Easter.